Welcome, everybody. That's my part on the program tonight or the agenda, so I welcome everybody. And we'll turn it over to the presentation of the local budget and Dr. Putnam and his team of experts will let us know what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can y'all hear me okay? I just want to make sure for closed captioning, so I'm still battling some kind of bug, so I'm gonna try to say this in a way that it's clear to those who view our work session, but I'll start with our budget message. The mission of Haywood County Schools is to work passionately and productively to support student success. We believe passionate and productive work results in student success, and no other school district should have better overall academic and extracurricular success. The mission components serve as guiding principles in budget development. Our primary focus points for the 25-26 budget are to recruit and retain and support employees in their passionate and productive work, limit expansion items in the local current expense budget, and adjust the budget as needed to account for loss of ESER funding, declining enrollment, and associated issues with the Canton Mill closure. This document represents the recommended budget for Haywood County Schools for fiscal year 25-26 for local current expense funds, capital outlay funds, and child nutrition funds. In compliance with statutory requirements of the School Budget and Fiscal Control Act, the anticipated revenues and the projected expenditures are equal, and the budget is organized to enable the Board of Education to control the fiscal management of the school system. Six separate funds make up the total budget. One, local current expense. Two, local restricted funds. Three, capital outlay. Four, child nutrition. Five, state public school. And six, federal grant. The local current expense budget provides for a broad spectrum of school system operating costs. These include but are not limited to supplies, repairs, utilities, and contracted services as well as instructional and support personnel. During the development of the local current expense budget, the following assumptions were used: 3% salary increase for non-certified personnel, 5% salary increase for certified personnel, 7.65% employer matching FICA, 24.75% employer matching retirement, and $8,662 annual cost for employer-matched hospitalization. Obviously, the General Assembly has not concluded their session. They could release that. We've seen them release it as late as October, November, so there has to be some budget assumptions, and we usually or typically calculate just a little high in anticipation for any decisions they may reach. The anticipated county per pupil appropriation rate is $2,591.43 for 6,370 Haywood County Schools students plus 686 charter students. The number of students is based on the best average daily membership of students for the first or second month of the 24-25 school year. Anticipated revenues also include $345,000 in funds and forfeitures and $24,000 from ABC revenue. This brings the fiscal year 25-26 total anticipated county revenue to $18,654, 18 million, excuse me, thank you, $18,654,130. Fund balance allocation of $719,483.75 brings revenue to equal the estimated expense of Local restricted funds are not permitted for use in the current expense budget. The anticipated local restricted funds are over $3 million. This number varies based upon grant receipts. These funds are reserved for use as set forth by grant or policy guidelines. Capital outlay budget funds cover maintenance, repair, and renovation projects, equipment needs, and capital safety support efforts throughout the school system. The requested capital outlay budget is $1,250,000. The child nutrition budget funds support the operation of the school food services. The anticipated child nutrition budget is $5,479,788. State public school budget funds provide for a broad spectrum of school system operating costs. These include but are not limited to supplies, repairs, contracted services, as well as instructional and support personnel. The state public school fund is the largest fund source and is based on ADM of 6,370 We have no preliminary planning budget data from the state. The current year allocation for state public school funds is $53,341,808. Federal grant funds are restricted for use in federally regulated areas. These include but are not limited to Title I, Title II, and Title IV. The current year allocation in federal grant funds is $4,590,102. The overall purpose of budget development and expenditures is to support passionate and productive work that contribute to student success. That is the budget message. I hope that gave you a good overview of the totals and what our purpose is served, what purpose is served in developing our budget. It is clearly focused on the success of our students. All right. At this time, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to Leanna Moody. You'll need a microphone. You can come and sit here and I'll get out of the way, or you can go up there. Is that one on? Okay, thank you.
Okay, as Dr. Putnam said, our focus points for 25-26 budget was to recruit, maintain, and support employees in their passionate and productive work, limit expansion items in the local current expense budget, and adjust the budget as needed to account for the loss of ESER funding, declining enrollment, and associated issues with the mill closure. Factors impacting the budget. You'll see the end of ESER funding. ESER III funding provided an additional allocation of $15,692,592 to Haywood County Schools. These funds were expended over four years. We got these funds in 21-22 fiscal year, and they ended September of '24, so we had them for three months this year in this fiscal year. Salary-related expenses paid with ESER funds for '24-25 totaled $878,287. But as you'll remember, there were no new positions created using those ESER funds, but some of the funds were used for remediation tutoring and then to help offset some expenses in local to help us save local funding. So that is a huge impact affecting our budget this coming year. Also, Haywood County Schools had a reduction of 117 students this year, so this reduction will be reflected in the 25-26 years' state, federal, and local allocations. And then we had the North Carolina Department of Public Safety grant. You'll remember that was the $3 million grant that Dr. Putnam was able to get for the state appropriation for the mill closure, following the mill closure. Those funds were used to offset some local expenses for utilities, and just in the '24-25 school year, we will be using $1,023,875 to save local funds this fiscal year, but we will not have those next year, so that's a huge hit to our budget for next year. On the next page in your book, we have the local current expense funding formula calculation. I wanted to show this to you, as this is how our funding formula is currently set up. We anticipate that we're going to get a per pupil increase of $81.57. That will bring next year's per pupil appropriation to $2,591.43. We are budgeting for a county appropriation of $18,285,134. But I want to bring this into perspective. With our ADM, if our ADM had remained the same and we hadn't lost those 117 students, our county appropriation this coming fiscal year would have been $18,544,273. So just in the loss of those students, that's the net loss of $259,000 to the school system, okay?
Quarter of a million dollars.
So the current, as you know, the current funding formula provides a 3.25% per pupil appropriation increase, but however, due to the loss of the students, the total percentage increase will only reflect about a 1.81% increase overall funding, okay? Any questions with that?
I believe inflation rate's a little higher now.
Uh huh. Just I wanted, Dr. Putnam and I discussed it earlier, and just to put that into perspective in dollar amounts, I think helps to realize, oh.
Yeah, just real quick on one question, going back to the grant, the $3 million grant. So using the $1,023,875, that completely gets rid of all that $3 million is now gone?
Correct.
Or will there be some leftover for?
No, and that grant ends June 30th, and that will spend the whole $3 million.
So, okay.
So that ends, and we will not have any of that funded next year to help offset some local expenses.
That's what I'm sure that was, that was clear, that there's, that money is not going to be available.
Yep.
Correct. We, it did enable us to build fund balance, so.
Yeah.
So out of that, a million spent, so some of it is in fund balance, or it's all spent?
No, there's a million left approximately. Two million of it has been expended.
And that was in last fiscal year, which helped build the fund balance when we had our audit for last fiscal year and, you know, we got, yeah, about the fund balance. That's what helped us put money back into fund balance was by that. So this year, we'll still have that million to help offset some local, but next year, our local budget's gonna be hit, and it's gonna be very tight because...
If you spent a million the first year and a million this year, then very likely that fund balance will shrink back to where it was, or could.
It could.
So in theory, yes. That's why we have to be cautious of the number of employees that we have. In the initial budget message, you heard not expanding the local budget, cannot be expanded, and we will make adjustments in the number of employees that we receive revenue for slowly and methodically over time, which is how we obtain the grant. Without the grant, you know, part of the justification for them giving us the money was we realize we're going to shrink a little bit, please don't make us do that all at one time, and the money would allow us to downsize more slowly and steadily over time.
There's approximately $4 million or a little more in federal funds. There's a lot of buzz around the federal funds right now. You hearing anything on that?
No, I've been asked that question. If you work in education long enough, you're kind of immune or numb to that. We are used to a $15 pay rate minimum with no additional funding. We're used to state money pullbacks. We will deal with that when or if we see it. We're just, it's sad but true. If you, if you work in public education, you're used to being shorted on money, so.
And this slide's a little bit of a repeat, but our budget assumptions were a 5% certified salary increase, a 3% non-certified salary increase, a 24.75% employer retirement contribution rate. Our current retirement rate is 24.04%. I took a three-year average and increased that percent. It's just all unknown currently. And I did a 7% increase for hospitalization rate. It's currently $8,095, and we assumed with the budget $8,662. But just now with hospitalization, the North Carolina State Health Plan, you may have heard this in the news, has a $507 million deficit, and they are currently discussing the best way to move forward with that regarding premiums. So they're also discussing implementing a salary-based premium for employees. So the higher your salary is, the more you'll pay for health insurance. That is being discussed, and that sounds like that will go into effect, but they are no information available what the employer's portion, what our matching rate's gonna be next year. So that could substantially change. All those are unknowns. Our next slide, we talk about our revenues for this year. So once again, our revenues for fines and forfeitures, we held steady at $345,000. Our ABC revenues, we maintained those steady at $24,000. Those look like we will receive those this fiscal year, and those are also unknown, but we just remain steady on those. To meet the budget, we'll need to appropriate the fund balance, and Dr. Putnam and I discussed this, and it was our consensus to hold the fund balance at the same as last year. We appropriated $719,483.75 last year to balance the budget, so we're going to maintain that this year until we can fully realize the loss of the ESER funds and the grant funds and get a good grasp on the budget, the local budget without those grants. We do need to take into consideration though, and just bring it to your attention, utilities, you know, have increased, and that's what we've used that $3 million for to help save that. It appeared over a two-year period that our utilities have increased approximately $450,000 over two years. So, you know, that fund balance may or may not increase or decrease. We're just, we've kind of got to figure out where we're headed with that. But this year, we've decided to hold it, and then we may have to adjust as we move into Your next slide shows the current balance by purpose. You'll know that the purpose codes defined expenditures by activities or actions that are performed to accomplish the objectives of the local school administrative unit. So for budgeting and accounting purposes, expenditures are classified into five purposes. $5,000 is instructional service. You'll see 50% of our local funds are allocated in the $5,000 series. Last year, we budgeted $9,529,212. This year, we're budgeting $9,883,350.81. This is, the increase is mainly salary and benefits and potentially the loss of the ADM reduction in that. You'll see on our 6,000 system-wide support services, we spend 41% of our local budget there. These are spent to support activities that provide system-wide support for our school-based programs. This is where we pay maintenance, central office, any operational support. Our liability insurance is in there. Some line items increased, some decreased in this area, mainly just to shore up and adjust for actual expenditures. I tried to look at the budget over a two-year average because we have had so much fluctuation between the ESER funds, so I tried to look over two years and then try to shore up the budget this year. This year's budget is a flat budget. I mean, we're not trying to increase anything, but we're trying to make it a more actual budget and see where we're spending each line item and looking closely at it. The 7,000 series purpose codes are ancillary services. This is where we have some nutrition and community service. This is less than 1% of our budget. This would be if we contributed any funds to child nutrition services, which we do very little out of local right now. As you know, that is an enterprise fund. And then the 8,000 purpose code series is for non-program charges. 9% of our budget's spent there, and that is mainly due to the, what we send to the charter schools. That line item increased from $1,680,000 to $1,720,000 this coming year for anticipated Any questions there? The next, actually, the next page, one is the pie chart showing the division of the percentages by purpose code, and then the other one was the line items. The next chart you'll see is another way to look at our budget is by allocation by object codes. Object codes means the service or the commodity obtained because of the specific expenditure. So our budget, we use six major object categories for budgeting. Salaries equate to 40.6% of our local budget. Employer-provided benefits are 19.8% of our budget. Purchased services, this would be where we pay contracted services, utilities, insurance, et cetera, takes up 21.3% of the budget. Supplies and materials are 9.4%. Capital outlay is .2. Less than 1% of the budget is spent on capital outlay projects. And then, we just said 9%, it was rounded, 8.7% actual goes to transfers to charter schools out of our local budget.
The percentages in their book did not match those.
Oh, my.
It's close.
Close doesn't count.
Ours is showing 41.3% in that salaries.
In salary?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. Percent, okay.
Anyway, it's within a few percent.
I will have that corrected.
We got the point.
Any questions or discussions or anything else you want to know about before we move to capital outlay? We did make some updates to it last minute today, so I apologize. I apologize. I'll get that corrected.
We'll have another budget meeting later on with all the breakdown of the line items and all that stuff that we normally do, correct? Or is this it this year?
Well, we can, we can do it in any form you like. This is, we felt like this was the most representative of the budget. In years past, when we've done that, I see your eyes glaze over. We're happy to present it in any way.
Okay. Ms. Moody, what was the percentage of capital outlay?
I think it was .4%.
It was, it was very low. It was .2. Do you need a?
.10?
Yep.
Is this what you're looking for?
This sort of?
Yes. Is that what you want?
Yes, sir. If you don't mind, just to sort of see where the differences are from year to year.
So on the spreadsheet, I think that's what you're familiar to see.
Thank you, sir.
It's got it by object codes.
Yep.
And also by program. So you can see each line item, what's been on each line item from last year to this year. And I'll be glad to go through that if you'd like.
I think if we have any questions, we'll get back to you.
You know where to get me.
Yeah, I mean, that's tripled since they started, I believe.
What charter schools?
I think it was like $600,000 or $500,000 when they first started, now it's $1.7 million.
And they keep every...
They're adding a school grade level every year or something.
Yeah. When, that's not only the local charter schools, there's quite a few virtuals that's opening, and a lot of students are going to that. I mean...
I'll, I'll speak to that. Very few are to the charter. Of the 117, 17 are to the brick-and-mortar charter. The other 100 are, yeah, our virtual charter could be the impact of the flood, could be the result of the mill closure, but only 17 are. And a lot of times, we get those students back. Yeah, so gone for now and back tomorrow, but far bigger than that, I think, are other factors. Like I said, the mill closure, the flood, and these virtual charters are rampant, I mean rampant. A new one pops up, it seems like about every two months.
I'm afraid there's gonna be a long-term problem with that.
Can you explain, yeah, go ahead.
At the beginning of the year, Ms. Moody sent me a list of student names, and some of them had never been enrolled in our system, but if they live in our county and they enroll in a virtual charter, then we have to...
We have to pay.
We have to pay for that. And so they had never even been students in our school system, but then they can enroll...
Break it down for us later about how many of the...
The virtual charter was in Raleigh, wasn't it? The one that...
It was in the Eastern District.
How many was it this year, Lina? Do you remember, Ms. Moody?
I don't have that right off the top of my head, but I can sure get that for you.
I wanna say 20.
There were a couple of students that could have been, you know, maybe long-term suspended or something, and parents enrolled after that. There was very few of those. Most of them are kids that we had not even ever enrolled.
Let's see. I think in your notebook, I have a break, I think I broke it down to know him he was virtual.
There were a couple of students that could have been, um, you know, maybe long-term suspended or something, and parents enrolled after that. There was very few of those. Most of them are kids that we had not even ever enrolled.
Let's see. I think in your notebook, I have a break, I think I broke it down to know him he was virtual. Yeah, on the county appropriation funding formula, there was six hundred and forty-eight in charter schools and thirty-eight virtual. And what hurts us a little is, um, we're funded from the county. We're like a flow-through, so the county does give us per pupil allocation for them. But it's based on the highest of the first two invoices of twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So next year, we, I have to turn in the numbers to them. So it's the highest of the first two invoices received from the charter schools. So if they come in mid-year and the numbers fluctuate with the, which they often do, we don't receive funding for those. Cause they're, we just, you know, it's just based off of the first two invoices that they get from the prior year.
We need to fix that.
That's right.
Yeah, that, that's not right.
And then our program and called every principal and, you know, wanted to know the story. You know, if we knew who they were and kind of what their story was. But I'm telling you, the majority of them, we didn't know who they were. They weren't in our system at all. And the ones that had been, that had withdrawn, um, then I wanted to call the principals and make sure, you know, cause we want to try to get them back. And so we did work on that.
If we check everyone, I mean, we have to verify that Haywood County residents and.
Well, isn't it, isn't it true that you said some of them come back? But the money's done gone, correct?
Depends on the timing. So the best of the first two, if it happens within that best of first two months, yeah. If it happens after that, no. Which is crazy.
Yeah. That's what I was thinking, if they kept the money, if it's after the.
Are you talking about the state level with that, on that definition? Or are you talking about the county level?
Both.
Both.
Can we not fix the county one?
Or we only pay the month?
I mean, if we got the commissioner to agree to that, I think.
That's something, you know, we'd have to have a discussion with them about.
Well, I think that it's only fair, if that kid moves back to us or comes from them to us, then penalizing us for the rest of the year, I don't agree with that.
It'd almost be better if they would do it, begin it the school year and reevaluate second semester, beginning of second semester or something.
Or just do it monthly.
Yeah.
You're getting appropriated every month from the county? Based on ADM, is that how it comes in or?
Well, we're appropriated, we get a check every month, or we get a direct deposit every month from them. But the appropriation is based on the ADM of the prior year. So like, the county appropriation in your, that, that's gonna be based on next year is the best out of one or two of this fiscal year, twenty-four, twenty-five.
We ain't talked about that. I don't know that that's, that's not fair to us if, either way. It needs to be a realistic number monthly, in my opinion. Or just look at it a whole different way to fund us.
Yeah, the, you know, we've, we've talked about a lot of detail and showed you a lot of things. The bottom line is our revenue does not match our expenditures. If you look at inflation in general, it's about seven percent. If you couched it, had to have a number to put it on, it's about seven percent. Yet, not only are we not seeing an increase because of the loss of students, we're seeing a negative residual. And so we've, we've gotta remedy that. While we have time to remedy that, that's where the three million comes in handy.
I think I heard her say the real increase is about one point eight or two point, was it two point eight?
It's one point eight one, I think.
Yes. That's the number I'm talking about. That's the real number, so we actually lost six percent or seven percent. If you look at an inflation rate of seven or eight percent, one point eight's not gonna cut it. Cause we still got the same number of lights to turn on, the same amount of heat. And, you know, you, you say, well, you can cut your teachers, but that, if it was all out of one classroom, that's easy to do. We're also mandated by how many teachers we get allocated for by enrollment. And mandated on how many can, uh, be in a classroom. And so, I mean, you're in a double-edged sword. It's not fair. We're not playing with a good hand, in my opinion.
And she stated that her energy cost went at four hundred thousand.
Well, and if you talk to teachers, you know, there's no class size limit after fourth, third grade, so fourth grade through twelfth grade. So we always used to allot at, um, you know, we started out at twenty-six kids, and we keep moving that number up. And so our classrooms are getting really big, and, and that's because of that. I mean, there's no maximum. You can have forty kids in a classroom. That's the reality of that. That's, they don't fund that like they do in K three. And so what's happening is because of this loss, I mean, we're just getting huge classrooms.
Yes, I've heard that from several teachers.
Yeah, and they are.
drowning in the number of students, especially when you get to those upper, those high schools.
And that's why, Ms. Morris, because we've had to raise it.
Classroom full of some difficult kids, and they just keep adding on because.
And, you know, just thank you to Dr. Putnam for the last two years for hanging on and y'all for approving that because honestly, that could be a whole lot worse. I mean, we're trying to hang on to that right now, but those rooms are big.
Maybe it's time we go have a talk with our commissioners.
Well, I think it's time to start the conversations about, you know, it's great to have a funding formula, but if the funding formula is not working. And, um, I mean, it's all well and good to say, we got this funding formula, we don't argue about this and this, but I think we might need to be arguing about the electric bill. If there's that much of an increase, and we didn't get that much of an increase in our funding formula, then it's not a realistic number to me. And I mean, I'm not, it's all been well and good, but I don't think it's in our favor.
It's not working anymore. I don't know that it ever truly did.
I don't know either.
It's definitely not in these times of inflation.
That's correct. And losing kids.
And losing kids.
Well, it's going in opposite, opposite directions, and that's not good, obviously.
And that's true across the state. A lot of school systems that are losing kids, they're struggling. I hear it at the North Carolina School Board Association Board of Directors meetings, and we, we're hearing it from across the state. And the ones that are growing, they're okay, but they, they'll be a day.
Well, and, and I would just like to say that, you know, well, I, I think we've demonstrated a willingness to cut and trim where we could.
Yeah.
Uh, we showed that two years ago. Uh, I'm no longer in that place. We are as lean and as efficient as we can be. Out of our own office, we eliminated a high school director. One person now is doing, uh, two jobs.
That's right.
We have, uh, eliminated, uh, half of what we normally contribute to lead teachers, which has been a vital position for us. And thankfully, our principals and staffs have made that work. So, and that's just a few examples. We've reduced the number of TAs. But I can assure you, we are as lean as we need to be. And, and I'm just not comfortable going below that. And so we, we must seek out additional funding.
Yes, because we will not continue to retain, um, our people, our, our, not just teachers, but principals and people in leadership, if they have to do the job of two or three people, and they're getting paid for the job of one person, we will, we will not be able to retain those people. They will find a better option. That the stress and the burnout level will be so much higher.
I just think it's important to note too that, you know, because Dr. Putnam has hung on to a lot of our academic programs, you know, we have seen a rise in our scores during this. We are looked at very differently now. There's a ranking that high schools that, you know, they give high schools when kids are applying to college. Um, I can't wait for, do you see how many kids right now? I mean, we have two right now, I know of, that have received the Goodnight Scholar at NC State this year. Two kids already. We've got two kids waiting. We had two kids in the finals for the Morehead. That used to never happen here. Every once in a while, we would have a kid. I mean, um, we had six kids go to governor's school last year. I mean, just the amount of, you know, success that our kids are having because of these academic programs, our partnership with the community college, all those things, and, you know, it's hard to cut that cause I've seen it happen. It's happened while I've been here, you know? And it worries me. Like, that's, that's gonna hurt our kids in our community too. Right now, our kids are having a lot of success. I cannot wait for you to see. I had a teacher email me today just about the scholarship. She said, I about cry every time I walk in the room. We just had a kid get a full ride to Garner Web. That's never, I mean, that's becoming the norm. I mean, I'm not talking half scholarships, I'm talking program, full rides.
But that's, that's continuing to offer. Go ahead and tell them about continuing to offer honors and AP.
We have, we have two AP classes, advanced placement classes, that we are one of probably, and don't quote me on this there, but like ten districts in the state that have these classes. Okay? They're the highest level writing and research-based classes. Those are helping our kids. And, and I mean, just today, you know, Jennifer Cody, who teaches that class, she, I mean, she texted me today, it just, it killed me. And she said, her exact words were, of my AP research students from last year, here, here are all the things they've been awarded, cause they've been in those classes. High Point Presidential Scholarships, U.S. Presidential Scholarship finalists, two Goodnights, one Levine, one Garner Webb. She said, isn't that amazing? And if we, and you think those are little things, but over time, colleges and universities, they look and see where our high schools are ranked, and all of a sudden, we're up there with the Chapel Hills and the Wake Counties, and they're going, these are really strong high schools. And they look at our kids differently. So it's really important. It scares me more than anything to let go of that. Um, and, and besides just all the other great programs we're doing too, with NCT and trying to get better at those. So anyway, that's just my soapbox on that.
We need to have the funding that matches the merit of the accomplishments that's being shown.
A top-tier school system should get paid top-tier. That's my opinion.
Yes.
And I think everybody here agrees with that.
Yes, absolutely.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent, because you know, our numbers, our numbers are gonna keep going down. Probably not necessarily because of, you know, kids moving, but families are not, are not moving here because there's no industry, there's nothing for families to move to. And it's so expensive to live here, and we have so many retirees moving in. Like, our numbers, more than likely, are gonna continue to go down. Maybe not dramatically, but we don't, we don't.
We had that study.
I mean, we have the schools to, to pull them in, but we don't have the jobs and the. When, when your school system's your number one employer in the county, it's, it's concerning.
You know, two floods and a mill closure, that, people have left, I mean, people have been displaced. I mean, you know, there, that's the reality of that. And they will continue to do that, you know, from the last flood, you know, we'll continue to see that, I'm afraid, so.
Yes.
Every time FEMA buys one, that lot's done.
Well, I think we identified the problem, it's money. All right, go ahead, Dr. Hey.
I think we're through capital.
Capital gonna do it? Who's doing cap? Thank you, Ms. Moody.
I got it. Chairman Francis, members of the board, um, before you've got the proposed capital budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. As in the last couple of years, we've remained at that one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar ask. So we'll, we'll walk through it. At Bethel Middle, we've got a roof replacement on the cafeteria there. It's near end of life. Um, we want to get it replaced before it starts to leak. That's an estimated cost of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. At Clyde Elementary, um, it's an HVAC unit in their gym. That's an estimated cost of a hundred thousand dollars. North Canton Roof Replacement for the K one building, uh, that's an estimate of sixty thousand dollars. At Pisgah High School, we would like to upgrade that fire alarm. Um, it's one of our oldest alarms, and it's getting harder and harder to find parts. We replaced one last year, I believe at Clyde it was. So this is just continuing that replacement, um, at an estimated cost of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Tusco High School, it's finished paving the parking lot there, that front parking lot. Um, if you'll remember, the last couple of years, we've done sections. We did behind, um, B building and around that way. We did kind of the front and the, the front two lanes there. So this is the rest of that parking lot, um, at an estimated cost of three hundred thousand dollars. At Waynesville Middle School, it's just new controls for the HVAC units, uh, in the rooms in C building. Uh, a lot of those are just, uh, nearing end of life, and we just need to go ahead and replace all of them at an estimated cost of fifty-five thousand dollars. Um, also at Waynesville Middle is paving A building parking lot. So that's the lot, um, right next to the old gym building at the visitor entrance to the stadium. Lots of potholes. That one's pretty rough. So very much needed, um, an estimated cost of seventy-five thousand dollars there. And then system-wide student device replacement, so Chromebooks for our students, um, at an estimated cost of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, for the total of one, one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And can I just add something here? One of the things you don't see represented in the current expense budget, right? Or the capital outlay, and you're certainly not gonna see it in child nutrition, is lottery. I know y'all receive lots of questions, hear lots of comments about lottery. I want to say it again. I think I've said it in another meeting, but I'm gonna say it again. Our total in lottery that Haywood County Schools receives in a year is a little over six hundred thousand dollars. So I think there are some ideas out there that lottery is far larger, and we receive far more. Uh, but I'm happy at any time, if someone would like to come in and see the books, I'd be happy to show them state sales tax, show them on NCDOR, whatever format they'd like to see it. Uh, lottery per year for Haywood County Schools is a little over six hundred thousand total for the year. And it can only be spent on capital projects.
And that's a narrow picture too.
Correct.
That's very narrow.
Now, um, the, a commercial has came out recently, or, you know, in the past four or five months, that said, the education lottery helped us pay for after-school people, or helped us pay for custodians. Unbeknownst to me, uh, after a little digging, the ins, the, the General Assembly said, take this amount of lottery money and give it to the Department of Public Instruction. And the Department of Public Instruction, with that allotment, with the allotment given to them by the General Assembly, has chosen to send us money that helps fund our custodians and after-school and those types of things. But that's not something we get to elect to do. It's sent to us in that line item to be used for that purpose. And it's a set amount. The only money sent to us with any discretion is the six hundred thousand from lottery, and it must be used for a capital project. So this, uh, as we think about lottery or hear about lottery, there's the truth about the lottery.
So we have gotten money that we were able to use towards janitors or?
So DPI at one time had a pot of money that they paid for janitors and whatever.
But we didn't receive any.
Right. And, and they've said, well, we're gonna, some of that money we had that we'd normally pay or send to the schools for that, we're just gonna use this lottery money. But the amount stayed the same. It was just a different fund.
Yeah, and then they took what they were giving us and put it somewhere else. So it's just a shell game. They just moved money from this pile to this pile.
A game.
How is that amount determined, like South County or different population?
As I understood it, cause, uh, again, um, once I seen the commercial that said they paid for custodians and whatever, I wanted to know how to do that ourselves. So I called the Lottery Commission, and what I was told was that is a General Assembly allocation to DPI.
But I mean, we get six hundred thousand. Is that the same for all the counties, or the basis of the amount you get on like the number of students?
Number of students.
Yeah, it's ADM.
Yep.
There's a little kicker too in there for low welts. I mean, it, it's convoluted.
It's a formula.
But hon- honestly, we get six hundred thousand.
It'd be nice to know the overall lottery revenue in the state of North Carolina, and what small percentage of that goes to public education.
Well, where they'll get you is they'll say, education, but it's like for, uh, scholarships.
Sure.
I mean, I'm, I'm not saying it's not a good thing, but I'm just saying that we're in the business of Haywood County Public Schools here. What do we see out of it? Not what the scholarships are and this and this and this. The intention of the lottery at, at first was great, and then we went through the recession of two thousand and eight, I believe it was, or nine, somewhere in that range, and it shifted, and it never came back. Cause it was not supposed to replace anything. It's supposed to be in, but it did go away. It was ADM allocation, wasn't it? Wasn't that what they called it back in?
Yes.
I was on the board then. We had this money coming in, just based on number of students, and they said, well, this, and it was great there for about a year. And then all of a sudden, we go into the recession, and they said, well, we can't do that anymore. So they took this all the way away and put in, the lottery was all we got from, you know. We see it every month on our financial report.
Correct.
We're still got a little bit of a balance in that ADM money from the state, so, I mean, anyway.
Well, I know I've said this before, but the first year I was on the board, breakout session at this conference for the lottery, and I went to it. And at that time, we were getting forty-six point five percent split between the schools. Three point five went to the operation of the lottery, and fifty percent went to winners. And when Angie was our finance officer, I asked her percentage that we were getting at that time, and that's been four years or more. We were down seventeen percent. Is what lottery money that the school systems are actually getting out of the...
Total take.
Total take.
Yep.
Split between a hundred and fifteen districts.
You almost had to say it, you'd be better off.
It's probably lower than that now, because they keep dipping into it.
Might be better to go play the Powerball and see if we could hit it. Might be a better chance. Just kidding. Gotta get a bigger truck.
Capital projects only. It's earmarked, capital projects.
Thank you, Ms. Dr. Haynes, for the, uh, anybody have any questions on capital? Stretch as far as you can. You always do. Building the grounds does a great job with doing that.
Yes, sir. We shoot to. Absolutely.
Ms. House?
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you are well aware, the child nutrition program operates independently of the school district. And our revenues include cash for meals and supplemental sales items sold, USDA cash reimbursements, and USDA donated commodities. Our budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year shows an increase of one percent. Um, the budget for this year is five million, five hundred, fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and six dollars. Uh, there is a, um, ma- error on this, uh, next line for our revenues. Our revenues are five million, three hundred, ninety-five thousand, eight hundred in revenue, and a hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and six dollars will be coming from our fund balance to meet our expenses. Labor and benefits make up fifty-five percent of the school nutrition budget. Food and supplies makes up forty percent, and then other overhead costs are five percent of our budget. Um, the USDA commodity rate that we receive, we get forty-five cents per lunch, based on the previous school year's lunch claims, and those funds are used to purchase commodity foods and farm-to-school produce. And then our USDA reimbursement rates, we get, um, two dollars and eighty-four cents for the meals that we claim as free for breakfast, and thirty-nine cents for any paid meals. And for lunch, we have a reimbursement rate of four dollars and fifty-four cents for the free meals and fifty-three cents for the paid meals. And as, um, I mentioned last time, we went over child nutrition, um, revenues and expenses, that eighty-seven percent of the meals that we claim are at the free rate, and the other thirteen percent are at the paid rate based on our CEP standings for the school year. And we'll get to reassess that percentage, um, April first, when I pull that data for next year.
Keep us posted on all, all that. I know there's some decisions we may have to make in the future about that. I'd like to make a comment. It's under the U.S. Department of Agriculture, not Department of Education. Isn't that correct? Child nutrition, child nutrition program reimbursement.
The reimbursement comes from USDA, but it's funneled through the Department of Public Instruction.
Yeah, locally. I'm talking about on the federal. There's been a lot of questions about closing down the Department of Education.
Yes.
Child nutrition falls under?
USDA.
USDA.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Most of the, um, increases in our expenses are based on the, um, increase in benefits and labor. That, that three percent that was expected, and then the increase in, um, insurance and retirement. Does anybody have any questions based on the line item? We are getting, um, we are expecting, hoping to get some local food, um, local foods for schools grant money that we've gotten over the last several years, uh, through, from USDA. That should be coming through next year. They haven't told us the total yet, but it's supposed to be about three times more than we've gotten in the past. So I'm expecting a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we'll be able to use on, um, local produce, local ground beef, um, dairy.
How does that work, Ms. Francis? Do, do those vendors, do they have to be on a vendor's list approved? You can purchase from anyone?
As long as they, uh, if it's someone locally, and they have to be GAAP certified and have two million dollars in liability insurance. And then if it's a, um, like a meat, uh, like brass town beef we use, um, they have to be USDA inspected and have liability insurance. And that's the biggest, um, hurdle, I think, for most of our farmers in Haywood County is getting that GAAP certification, cause there's an expense for that. And it's not, um, the certification is by crop, so they have to get each crop certified with that GAAP certification.
There's a whole industry certifying farms. They charge to come into your farm and get you GAAP certified. It's a, it's a pretty big process.
And I know the Extension Office offers grants and will help farmers do that as well.
That's great. Any other questions for child nutrition? Thank you much.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions on the budget or anything? I do have one item for closed session.
Okay.
Um, and at this time, I'm gonna ask for a motion to go into closed session.
So, who?
Second.
Mr. Burnett? Oh, okay, good. Okay, so we got two items.
I've got, I've got another.
All right, three items? Okay. Michelle, you, Ms. Swanger, excuse me, you got the motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Just like to mention that there'll be no action taken tonight whatsoever. Uh, so, we won't be reconvening. We'll adjourn out of the closed session. Thank you.